We have 6:30, let's start the meeting. Looks like we have five regular members tonight. Tom and Keith, myself, Brian and Bruce?
Joe.
Joe? And they'll be voting members tonight. Okay, do we have any adjustments to the agenda for tonight?
Nothing for me.
Roger, shut that up. No adjustments. Looks good, George.
Okay, I'll take a motion for the acceptance.
So moved.
So second.
Been moved in second, and Tom's a little short there.
That's fast enough today.
All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, has everybody had a chance to read the meeting, the minutes from the meeting of March 12?
Yes.
Take a motion?
I move, uh, go ahead.
I move we accept them, it's a very good job of a long, complex meeting.
Thanks, Tom.
Second.
It's been moved, do we accept the minutes of the March 12 meeting? All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, I have finding a fax here from Mark Bradstreets, presentation on the expansion to his, uh, to his shop area. So I'll need everybody to sign. Tom, you want to start? Scott, why don't you have a seat and get ready to... Hey, this is a primary, preliminary plan application review. The application fees have been paid. And at our March 12 meeting, the board decided the application was complete, and we'd hold a public hearing, that's tonight, and it was not necessary to visit the site. The butters were given notice of the public hearing by letter dated March 20th, and it was also advertised in the Republican Journal on the 29th of March and the 5th of April. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing, and do we have questions from the board? Tom?
No.
Keith? I don't have any. Bruce?
One question is, Al Blackada still, what, is the butter, is that lot sold?
I'm not sure which one it is.
That would've been 4113, 10 Turin Avenue Lane. Listed on the butter, I think.
Um, I can tell you, the butters are in your results in the assessments book when you submitted this. So if it's sold, it hasn't been changed or, or actually changed or anything as well. That's, that's what we're going to write it.
So if you go by, because I think one of the Altman members was there.
What was the name again?
Wood Blackada, 4113. I thought Laura Sheaton owned that.
We did have one unclaimed certified mail that went out. Just make sure, so it's entered in the record. It was unclaimed and unwarranted, forward for a Dexter Little deal.
That's where, that's where the notice went.
Yeah, it went to.
Does that answer your question?
Yep, she got, she got a notice of the hearing. They said, let's not get something hung up on the small detail later on.
What was the map in that search? We'll go check it.
4113, 10 Turin Avenue Lane.
Scott?
And I'm clear.
We also sent out notices, so, and...
We're covered.
Here's it, we're covered, because there's where it was sent.
Okay.
That particular notice. Okay? The only one I had come back was one that Sinclair's owned now.
Is this the one that's been signed?
And that was, what, 41, one or something like that? Brian, I'm sorry. What, was that all you had, Bruce?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, nothing for me.
Nothing. Okay, at this time, we'll open it up to the public. Okay, not seeing any, any questions from the public, then we'll close the public hearing at...
6:37.
6:37, our secretary says. Okay, if all members should have the, the new subdivision ordinance, and on page 16. It's Article 6, Section 5. When granting approval to the preliminary plan, the board shall state the conditions of such approval with respect to specific changes which it would require in the final plan. So I'll ask the board, are there any changes that any of the members of the board want in the final plan? Start with, with Tom again?
No.
I have none. Bruce?
What are the other conditions for approval?
You're all set then?
I'm okay.
You're okay? Okay, then, may I have a motion about, that there are no specific changes to the final plan?
Uh, so moved.
I'll second it.
It's been moved. It's been moved in second, that there's a motion of no specific changes will be required to the final plan. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, I sub paragraph two, character and extent of required improvements. I don't believe you had any waivers you wanted to do, Scott, at this time. And number three, constructions items, there is no construction at all. So I'll, I'll take a motion on the entire preliminary plan. Whether it's approved, approved with, with conditions, or denied.
I move we accept the preliminary plan.
I'll second. It's been moved in second.
I have a question, we still have a condition in there about the road, not moving further.
That's on our plan, and obviously was part of the condition for fees.
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry, was that, you're all right with that? Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve the preliminary plan. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Thank you, Scott, next, next month we'll wrap it up.
I don't know if you've ever been in that, you have this correct. And I just, I'll give you this story, just to enter the record. I had hoped to have the DEP fill a water permit, and then it's by tonight. Just came in, she couldn't get, it's not done, but she gave an email to say that.
To cover it, yeah, okay.
Getting that, so that will, that will need to be part of your conditions on file.
Do you want to give that to Randy, so he can put it in the file?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Easy, Tom.
We'll see you next month then.
Yes, sir.
The next item on the agenda tonight is site plan review, public hearing for Jess Connor, doing business in Guys and Dolls Barber and Beauty Lounge. Jess? Okay, the, the fees have been paid. The town staff, you should all have a copy of that. It's been signed, and the copy the board has, the signature is not complete, last, at the last minute Bud showed up, or Bud.
Andy?
No, Rivers. Showed up. Yeah, yeah, showed up, and, and he's put a condition that he wanted hazmat, or what hazmats will be present, will be present. So I'm sure when Andy goes through and takes a walk through with the code enforcement officer, Bud's going to check it out at that time. So if you'll pass this copy down to Randy, because that one has Bud's signature on it. So Jess, tell, tell us what your plans are.
So I am hoping to open up a barber shop at Aaron Fethke's.
Oh, excuse me, did you have that, you gotta push the button on there.
Button down a little.
There you go.
How's that?
Much better.
Okay, so I would like to open up a barber shop at 29 East Main Street in Searsport, where Aaron Fethke's old office was. It'll just be me in there, so I would like to be able to service this community with men's haircuts, but also women would be welcome, because it's a small town, and in order to make a living, I don't want to close out a certain portion of the market.
Okay, let, let me explain part of this. It's in a historic building, that's on the National Register, which affects your signage on there. So we'll cover that later on in, in this application. And also, you had drawn up a pencil sketch of your sign.
Yes.
And I had actually taken a Google photograph and, and put it on, on you.
That was nice of you, thank you.
Is that, is that the way?
Yes.
This is what I envisioned from the way you drew it up?
That's right.
So the sign will actually be in keeping with the story, part of the, the building. Okay, let's open a public hearing then. We'll start with Tom again, from the board. Do you have questions on the application, Tom?
I have no questions, looks good.
Keith?
Same old problem, no packing, but it's not her fault.
I'm always the guy with questions, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe I have to do the other couple. Is the, the sign itself, the letter, going to be gold?
I actually don't know, I may just do black and white, something simple. I hadn't, I hadn't chosen a sign yet at the time that I filled out the application.
Don't buy no thing here, it looked like with black with the gold, I didn't know it was.
Right. I did put gold on the application, that was a thought that I have been kind of playing around with, yep.
And what other licenses or permits or something do you need, other than what you get from the planning board?
I need to have an establishment license, so the state licenses, and then I need to take my board exam, which is May 21st, for barber license.
Barber license?
Yep, and then any permits that the town requires me to have, for, for example, installing a backwash, or sink, I need to have, I need to have that done, and I need to have that signed off by a plumber. So, Randy, I know that we discussed this quite a bit, as far as I know, that was what we discussed, right? Yeah.
I didn't know, any state one? And what, what hours of operation are they?
Um, I put on the application, I believe it was 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. I'm still working on that right now, because I have children that are in school, so I kind of need to work out some childcare issues, but it'll most likely be 9:00 AM, and much, closing much earlier than 8:00. Yes, yep.
What is a beauty lounge?
I just put beauty lounge in there, because I wanted, first of all, I wanted a name that welcomed women. Like I said, I don't want to close out a certain portion of the market, because Searsport is so small. Some of the men already have a place that they're going to a barber. So beauty lounge was just sort of to depict the idea of women are welcome. I can't do chemical services with my barber license, so I will be providing haircuts, you know, shampoos, roller sets, things like that. Styles, very simple things like that, nothing with chemicals or anything. But I wanted women to know that they were welcome. Plus, it sounded good.
And I was just saying, okay, so it's a beauty shop, a lot of conversation goes on in beauty shops.
Oh, I know.
And I thought, hey, a lounge, you know, you have a few chairs in there, someone's coming, they could, they could hang around for a couple hours and talk and socialize and...
You're right, but the more they spend time...
I'm not guessing, I just wanted to say, that's it, yeah, that's good. Could use a downtown, it's good for people.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Plus, there's a coffee shop next door, they can grab some coffee from Patrick and Celine.
Good, good luck.
Thank you.
Make money.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Bruce?
None for me.
Oh, none for you? Any other questions?
No, I was just, 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 good luck.
All right, fine. I'll open it up to the public now, if there's any questions from the public. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing then at...
6:48.
6:48. Okay, for the board now, if you go to a copy of the land use ordinance on page 12. Page 12 lists all the historic sites in Searsport that are registered on the historic district, and you can see there that map 12 lot 32 is listed as an ice cream parlor. So once upon a time, it was an ice cream parlor, I guess Bruce, you remember that?
When you were a kid?
No, and I remember who used to run it. Ice cream parlor, let me have, kind of a little wire tears. You gotta remember that, Jim. Okay. Like an old fashioned ice cream parlor.
On page 14, it lists the standards for evaluation. One of the standards is the Secretary of Interior's standards for rehabilitation for treatment of historic properties. I've given, as I told you all before, I've given you a copy, and the reverse side of the picture. You should have a excerpt from that, that book, on storefronts. And as you can see, the configuration of the storefront are significant, as are features such as display windows, base panels, bulkheads, signs, doors, transients, kickplates, corner posts, pillars, and so forth. So, in my opinion, on, on the front page, you see an older picture of Searsport downtown. And you'll see how the signs are put above the door, and this is black and white, so obviously, they're in black and white, but I think you all get the, the picture of the way they've been put up in the past. So Jesse's sign is in keeping with the town, as it was, and with that historic building. So I just wanted to point that out to everybody, because that's one of the, the reasons that we've undertaken the historic ventures of Searsport. Okay, on land use page 16. I'm sorry, my mistake. We've gone over that 36.
36?
36. First of all, let me say that it is in the commercial zone, and barber shops are allowed in the commercial zone in Searsport. So on page 36, we have a list of four, there are actually five, on the next, fifth on the next page of general performance standards. I believe that most of these aren't applicable, but I'll need a motion from the board, which ones would be applicable.
I'll move that the general performance standards on the section 5, A, 1, 2, 3, 4 are not applicable to this particular use.
Well, I'm not so sure about 1. I think that will be determined, you know, no material which is dangerous to explosion, fire hazard, chemical hazard, used or whatever. Won't that be determined when Randy and Fire Chief do their walkthrough?
Hasn't that?
If it's...
What'd you say you're gonna have in there for flammable, you're gonna be washing, will you be having any flammable's in there?
No, I'm not planning on it, no, just shampoos, conditioners. Yeah, so nothing...
Your license didn't cover doing the other stuff?
I can't blow buildings up with my license. No, I'm just kidding.
So I kind of...
Do you want to amend it, you know, the...
I, I would like to amend it to say that items 2, 3, and 4 are not applicable, and item 1 is, is acceptable, because there'll be no hazmat materials used in her business.
I'll second that. Was that a motion you made?
That was a motion, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, I made a motion.
Yeah, Bruce and Keith.
All is in favor? Five zero zero. So that leaves us with number 5 is applicable.
What's number 5?
And I think you said there's no lights on the sign, it's just the barber pole would be lit.
Yes.
Isn't that correct?
Yes.
I make a motion that item 5 lighting is not a problem, because there's just the barber pole, and there is a minimal adverse impact, in fact, there's no adverse impact on neighboring properties.
I'll second. It's been moved in second, that number 5 has been met, lighting. All those in favor?
They make new ones of those now?
Five zero zero.
They do make new ones, yes, thank goodness, because the old ones are hard to find, in good condition.
And expensive, too.
They are very expensive, yes.
Okay, if we go down to specific performance standards under B, again, let's, let's have a motion, which is the ones that are applicable in this case. I'll move under 5B, number 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 8, 9, 10, are not applicable.
So all but, all but 6?
6 and 11, 6 and 11.
All but 6 and 11.
Second it?
It's been moved in second, that the only applicable standards, under specific standards, are the signs, which is number 6, and activities requiring a site plan review, number 11. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, we'll need a motion on number 6 and 11. Are they, have they been met?
Uh, I move that 6 has been met, as we outlined previously under general standards.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded at number 6 under signs. That standard has been met, all those in favor? Five zero zero. And number 11, it does require a site plan review, so I'll take a motion on that.
I'll make a motion that we gotta have it under site plan review.
I'll second it.
Second it?
It's moved in second. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, then I'll need a total motion on the applicable standards of section 5.
I move that all the applicable standards of section 5 have been met.
I'll second. It's moved in second, that the applic, all the applicable standards of section 5 have been met. All is in favor? Five zero zero. Turn to page 42, on the land use ordinance, section G. I'll need a motion that positive findings have been found in, in 1, 2, 3, and 4, under section G.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that positive findings have been met in section G. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, moving right along, if you'll pick up your site plan review. Page 7, standards of approval. Quite a few of these aren't applicable.
I move the preserve and enhance the landscape is not applicable.
Second it?
It's moved in second, that preserve and enhance the landscape, in this case, is not applicable. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Number 2, relationship of the proposed building to the environment.
I move that that has been met, because it's already a building that's been there and been used before.
I'll second. It's been moved in second, that relationship of proposed building to the environment has been met. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Number 3, vehicle access.
I move that has been met, because there are parking spaces in front of the building, and as I said, the building has been used before, and they've had vehicles come to access Aaron Fethke's business.
I'll second. It's been moved in second, that vehicle access has been... It's been moved and seconded that vehicle access has been met, all those in favor? Five, zero, zero. Number four, parking and circulation.
I move that has been met for the same reason as number three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that number four, parking and circulation standards been met, all is in favor? Five, zero, zero. Number six, surface water drainage, is that applicable?
No.
Really?
No. I move it has not been met, it is not applicable.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that surface water drainage is not applicable in this application, all those in favor? Five, zero, zero. Existing utilities, number six.
I move that's been met, the building is there and the town has signed off on it. The appropriate people in the town have signed off.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that utilities has been met, all is approved, five, zero, zero. Adverse, advertising features, number seven.
That's been met, we have it signed, size and where it's gonna be.
Is that sign gonna pass the historic district and the preservation committee?
They don't have to approve that.
Okay.
I double-checked the order.
It's going that way.
No, it's up to us now.
And I'd like to see the lid as a gold, I think it adds some class to it, looks nice.
That's exactly what I'll do, just for you then.
You're gonna do that? I'm not gonna pay for it, I just thought-
He's gonna save him the bill.
That's right.
It just looks nice, it looks nice in the gold.
Thank you.
Was there a motion there?
Keith made the motion, I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded that the advertising features have been met, all those in favor? Five, zero, zero. Special features of the development.
I'll move that's not applicable, there's no, none of these features will be in this operation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that special features of the development standard has been met, all those in favor? Five, zero, zero. Exterior lighting.
I move that's been met, we covered that previously under the land use ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the exterior lighting standard's been met, all those in favor? Five, zero, zero. Number ten, emergency vehicle access.
That's been met, either side.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that emergency vehicle access has been met, all those in favor? Five, zero, zero. Municipal services, number eleven.
I move, go ahead.
Go ahead, that's been met, exhibit they'll let down, sign off.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that municipal services standard's been met, all is in favor? Five, zero, zero. Water pollution, is that applicable?
No.
Second.
It's not applicable.
Was that a motion, Tom?
Yes, sir.
It's moved and seconded that the water pollution standard's been, is not applicable, all those in favor? Five, zero, zero. On-site water supply.
I move that's been met, she's on town water.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that onsite water supply standard's been met, all those in favor? Five, zero, zero. Soil erosion, is that applicable?
Not applicable.
Second.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that soil erosion standard's been met, or is not applicable, I'm sorry, not applicable, all is in favor? Five, zero, zero. Septies disposal.
I move that's been met, she's on town sewer.
And they signed off, I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the septies disposal standard's been met, all is in favor? Five, zero, zero. Adverse effect.
I'll move that's not applicable.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that adverse effect is not applicable, all is in favor? Five, zero, zero. Financial capacity.
I spoke to Smiley, he says that.
Is he asking me a question?
That's kinda not applicable, really.
A lot of times it pertains as to whether it can fulfill, you know, development, let's say, for town infrastructure and things like that.
Right.
Right, she's not building anything, so-
Or you're not gonna build a big plant and then walk away and leave the town with the thing tearing it down.
No.
I move it's not applicable because she's not building anything.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded that number seventeen, financial capacity is not applicable, all is in favor? Five, zero, zero. The last one is air quality.
I'll move that's not applicable.
Just no noise.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded that air quality is not applicable, all those in favor? Five, zero, zero.
I move that the performance standards that are applicable in this application have all been met.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the performance standards that are applicable in this particular application have been met, all is in favor? Five, zero, zero. How about the total application?
I move we accept the application.
Accept it or approve it?
Approve it. Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the application as submitted, all is in favor? Five, zero, zero.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, now, hold a minute, we'll give you a signed application.
That wasn't too bad, was it?
No, I just didn't know if you were asking me to find out.
That's a long story.
Do you want another, oh, sign, you have, Randy gave you two to sign.
Yep.
Check the approval.
Get this one? Thank you, welcome to town.
Be good to see the building occupied and business form on. Good luck. Make lots of money, cut costs ahead.
Wonder what they say in their business here today, gone tomorrow.
Gone.
Okay, the next application is a sketch plan review for Christopher Colby, fourteen lot subdivision.
You brought reinforcements. Is that the owner of the property?
Thank you very much.
Why don't you tell us what Mr. Colby wants to do?
We would like to start a subdivision, seventeen lot subdivision up on the Mount Eftum Road with a public street and an access road into the village cemetery. Subdivision consists of about three point four acres and a one point six acre lot roughly we would like to convey to the town. I believe he has, you know, interest in selling them for single-family dwellings.
You said that was gonna be, wants to be a public road?
Yes.
It'll be different.
I guess we can start with Brian, just general questions, you know, nothing in detail.
Uh, no general questions.
Bruce?
Yeah, from where it's located, you know, five thousand square foot lots are there. If you take it between frontage and the other stuff, usually about twenty-four hundred square feet per foot, but you know, a glowing structure. Seemed like, you know, small lots and stuff are, and that, yes, I guess what the theory is on this, I could see it being a great one for tiny houses on things, but it looks like anything going in, manufactured housing, something like that, or whatever, it's gonna be long and narrow.
Yes.
And, and fairly close to each other.
Yes.
And if you've got ten-foot setback from all your other property lines, then there'd be much room for outbuildings and things either. I just wonder what the theory was.
Well, it's his theory, his theory-
Small lots, he did, Prospect Street, which he already has under construction, more frontage, I know it's all legal and stuff, I just wonder if he had ideas or something in there, like I say, the tiny house thing.
Well, I think he has a interest in trying to provide like a affordable lot for people either retiring or getting started is what his plan was. I don't believe tiny houses came up, but they will be long and narrow.
Yeah, well, you have town, town facilities.
Yes.
And it's almost within walking distance, you know, it's a place to put them. Maybe we should have more of them closer to town. Would like to see the site over.
This site is relatively flat, there is a, on lot one, there's a pipe shown and where the new corner will be located, and there is a drainage ditch down that area, and that's probably the primary access for all the drainage in the, you know, roadway, that's probably where it'll go, it probably won't exit onto the street.
Appropriately named Dow Street.
Anything else?
No, that's the general things.
Keith?
General, that's the first thing I thought when I see the size of the lots, time you take off the movement of the sideline to get in there, you got small, tiny homes, the first thing that goes in my mind.
Well, it's a thirty-foot envelope, so you can have a twenty-eight by, most modular homes are twenty-eight by forty, fifty.
You're gonna be able to walk around it.
But you have the ten-foot setback.
Yeah, I came up with twenty-four hundred square feet.
Yeah.
We look at a house twenty-five, to me twenty-five hundred square foot house is pretty good size.
Yes.
Go two stories.
That's okay.
Five thousand square feet.
Oh, one small quick question. That hole to the cemetery, is that gonna be built anyway? Since opposed-
The extension?
Yeah.
I will turn that one over to the town manager.
Yeah, that would be our goal, in fact, with what happens here and the next steps, we would look to build a passable road in dirt, maybe provide the base for how he's gonna move forward. I did have a direct conversation with Chris about that, he's, he understands to build that to subdivision standards, he has a good idea of what the cost would be, but for us to gain that access perhaps this summer, we would actually bring some base in there and start to build that road up. We have an issue with that cemetery that we have no more room. There's actually a lot of room down below, but it was the paupers field and we don't know who is down there or where, so we're not gonna do anything with that lower portion of the cemetery, which basically leaves us done. There's no room for expansion. I have walked in the section where the proposed extension is in the road and it's nice and flat, it'd be very easy for us to bring that up to a standard where we could extend the cemetery in that direction and give some people, I get a lot of inquiries for space in that cemetery and Don, Don Garrel and I have done a lot of measuring and fitting lots in, but it's really at a point where if we don't acquire some land to make an extension like this, it's just not gonna happen. So our goal would be if we could make this all work, to get in there actually this summer and make it so that we, in doing this for the town, we can claim there's a four lot section that we have to use now for turnaround and that, those four lots could be sold and we could make this a one-way road through the cemetery, it'd be very nice, it's a very difficult one to navigate without it. That's how this whole thing came about, about, you know, bringing the road out and joining us, so, and the Cobys were willing to work with us on that.
Wasn't that cleared and expanded here a few years ago?
Probably when there was an ice cream shop on Main Street.
No, I know, I seen this, I know, I've been on, but-
It's gotta be this-
I thought town drew it something, I was saying, if you went in and off to the left.
We haven't done any sort of clearing in years up there.
Okay, I got it.
But that expansion out to that side, it was probably in the sixties.
No, it was in, it was in the last fifty.
We did go in and we cleared out a single lot right at the end of the line, we went in and measured, in fact, we, there were a couple of them that we were able to get. It wasn't, wasn't major clearing, it was just underbrush that had grown in.
Keith, you have anything else? You're good? Tom?
This lot sizes make me very uncomfortable. If we, if we assume one to two cars on each lot, there are one to two parking spaces on a fifty-one, a hundred square foot lot with potentially a building of modest size, this says suburbia to me, having grown up in suburbia. I'm not saying no, but I, it just concerns me, I'm curious what the abutters would have to say. I have some concern about having access through a cemetery, creating traffic through there. Those are my immediate concerns, just something I think we're gonna need to discuss. That's all I got.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
So I have a couple of questions if I can ask them.
Sure.
The roadway, is that going to be considered a minor street? So it doesn't have to be sixty-six feet wide, it would have to be sixty?
Randy?
It can be sixty? You said it can be sixty?
I believe it can, for a minor, sixty and twenty-foot wide travel. I was looking at Dave, it's not major, it's a minor, so it's all on that. Then my other question was to open space, if you're gonna require an open space with And now, I was reading in the ordinance that you can maybe opt out of that in lieu of cash. Is that, have you ever heard about it? Happened?
No.
Okay.
I don't really have.
Would that be something that the board may consider?
Well, I think we'll have to discuss that.
Yeah, I think that goes down to something else, you know?
Pardon? Go, go.
When we went through with the Pinces Cap and the housing development, we had some open space up there, they called it the ball field. I just kept saying, I want an open field where, you know, there are kids, there are people, they could go out and run around and do things. And that's off steam, they haven't beaten up their spouse and stuff. It's just a place to go. You're gonna have fairly dense housing here too. I guess you play ball out on the street. You know, you're gonna do it, play catch. I nearly had it retired, I don't play no ball these days. I'm answering the road part, I was just thinking, a lot of times we look, you're, you're in for 14 lot subdivision, and I think, what, 15 and 17 for later?
Well, I think that's going to change. I did speak with, uh, Jim Byer at Department of Environmental Protection, and he said we could do all 17 in one phase.
Yeah, well, I just, where you heading?
Yeah.
I'm looking down the road, Jim Bambo's land on the other side, it's, suppose that goes in, you know, for further subdivision along the way in, in the future. Then if it's not blocked off, it, at the end, or leaving some sort of a right away, you can go through to that other, other lot and continue through. I'm gonna have a, a street there. I'm just looking down the future and thoughts on it. Haven't looked that way, I don't think Jim planned on selling anything, but town's gonna grow. Maybe you put another one in there. I'm going to get the brook down there too. But, it's just a thought, with the culvert side there, there's an opening to go through, you can tie those streets in or something else.
Would that change it to a, from a minor collector to a, a major collector?
You'd be minor, what it would be afterwards, if you go to the other side, but at least it's not precluded. I'll say back to, to Orenol is one of the things up there. If you wanna go visit the kid next door, you've gotta go all the way downtown, then around and up the street. A whole bunch of them, all, all that end streets. We don't seem to tie them in. You get that way coming from Belfast to Sisport, there's no way to go back through to the back Sisport road. We've locked it off. It's kind of look ahead in the future, aren't we? Something to think about in the future, we've taken care of it down behind Homeport Inn, you know, the handhead there, so you can get into that lot, and the buyers was gonna have a subdivision. And we try to do it other places, so, pursue if possible right away through, if some throw it as a thought.
Yes.
Not as an arm twister or anything else, but just saying, hey, look in the future, might be a good idea if you wanna go through.
Definition of a minus, or a minor road is 200 vehicles per day or less.
I would say we're under that.
Yeah, I would think so.
Unless, even with an expansion, it would be under, if they put it-
Right. Those two feet give you a place to park a car now.
George, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, do we have the ability to re, um, set a maximum building size for these, this size lot? I mean, the building size has an impact on the overall, um, I guess I'd call it livability of the, the project, as opposed to having the, the half of that lot covered with building, and if somebody, and, and then what happens is somebody throws a shed up there, is that possible? And then if there's two cars parked there, per living unit, uh, we're getting, starting to get really jammed in there. Hence my question. A smaller building would, would make this a little bit, uh, better.
The shed has to be set back, like everything else. But the only place we have, I think, where we have the, we set a lot coverage is Shore Land Zone.
Okay.
We've got a 10-foot setback on our sideline, side of our main line, the front line, some places, do something else. So in essence, if somebody, and I'm just saying in essence, something like, put those on their path, and you get 10 feet up all the way around, we don't have any, for this.
Up, uh, near the Red Mount Heaver Road, we hit that Palmeroy subdivision, those are 100-foot frontage, and you're sure there's, there's some conflict up there with intrusion on other people's yards. But, those, uh, manufactured housing things didn't go lengthwise, they went crosswise everywhere, which way. Some complain about the other person's tree, and this or that.
Well, then, maybe the, obviously, it's, if it's not within our purview, perhaps is with the person selling the lot saying, okay, um, I'm selling these lots, they're not large lots, um, we're selling it with the covenant that the building can't be over, say, 1,000 square feet, to make a better fit with the, uh, with the whole development. I'm just putting that out there as a thought, as that, uh, that that may make it more palatable.
That would be up to Mr. Colby.
I under- that's what I mean, that's what I mean.
We have no control over that, Tom.
Well, it would make, it, we would have control over it in terms of saying yes or no to the development, though. If he says, I'm gonna do that, um, that would make me a little bit more comfortable with not having, uh, 17 lot, well, not 17, but 14 lots that are mostly, you know, very high percentage of stuff other than, uh, building or other things on the lot.
Yeah. I don't believe we could turn down the subdivision because of that, though. There's only certain reasons that we could turn down a subdivision.
Thanks to the ordinance, but, they just, someone could, if they want more room, they buy the lots.
True.
And they have it there. Sometimes it goes the other way, those lots on Savage Road, when they were laid out by John Pickley, he had a minimum of what you put, it had to be a $25,000 house. Well, that sure has changed. Maybe later on, go 1,000 square feet, you know, that may, I would say, lab, but maybe small, something for town.
All right, just for the record, I have no problem with affordable housing and affordable properties, um, I just have, I have some concerns.
My idea is good, Tom.
Yeah.
But subdivision has a near as, you would have to have control of-
Yeah.
-a homeowner association to, uh, enforce that once all the lots are sold.
Mm-hmm.
You get down, Mr.
I had the same concern Tom did, and I looked at it the other night in the afternoon, about, time to get two cars in there, 'cause almost everybody has two vehicles today, but usually they're working, both have to work one day.
And the snow, a little bit.
Yeah, snowing, well, it's another one.
Then you get some privacy, 'cause you've got all the snow in between houses.
Tom, did you have anything else you wanna add?
No, thank you.
Okay, my next question, I guess, is, do you wanna have an onsite visit?
Yes.
I personally do.
Well, there's three anyway.
Yeah, I would.
Yeah.
I move we have an onsite visit.
On second.
It's been moved in second that we, uh, arrange for an onsite visit, all those in favor? Five, zero, zero.
Luckily, none of us work.
Do you wanna, do you wanna set a-
Luckily, none of us work.
Do you wanna set a date for the, the next meeting is May 14th. I don't know whether you wanna have it that day, or... First of all, we have to have the center line of the road flagged, and also, uh, the lot corners.
All of them?
All of them. So, I don't know how soon you can have that done.
I can have it done by mag, 14.
Okay.
That'll be good bug will. That'll be good bug season, black flies. Idea.
It might not be snowing, though, so.
Yeah, it might not be snowing, they go walk around on it, see things. Well, there's nothing much.
So we're saying May 14th?
Well, it's up to the board, what, whatever you wanna do.
We oughta have a date a little ahead of time, in case something happened, the rain snows above that day, so we can go back another time.
Now, the other thing is-
It's not the official meeting, so it has to be published, right?
Yep.
And we're, you're gonna be the representative, I assume, take us around.
Sure.
Someone, we just can't go walking on there on our own. We'll get arrested.
And we'll have to advertise it twice in the paper prior to that. Is that what you wanna do, May 14?
What time? Two in the afternoon?
Two.
Seven in the afternoon, so you go back and get the mud off our feet, so we can-
2:00 PM, okay.
2:00 AM.
2:00, is that what we said?
Yes.
14.
Yep. Okay, I also need to find out what the board wants to do, or require for contour intervals on the preliminary plan. Normally, it's what, 20? Contour intervals?
Yeah.
20 feet? Is that what the board wants?
I'd like to see it to lessen that, if it's available.
It's, I mean, it's flat, so the 20-foot contour, there may not be any on it.
Doesn't show anything, right? We have, we have a lot of lots, and supposedly it's flat, I don't know, honestly, I don't know if it's flat or not. It's good and flat, 20, you wouldn't even need contours, but I guess I'd, I'd like to see, maybe give it 5 foot. With the density of the lots, the small lots.
It's not that big an area, so.
On this roadway, I mean, I'm assuming it's gonna have to go through all the town specs, design, so that roadway will probably have a topo done on it, that are 1 foot, that will be in the engineering plans. And that will extend out, at least to the, you know, boundary lines of the subdivided lots. So the 5-foot contour, it won't be a problem.
So you're saying 1 foot then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Be 1 to 2.
So we're saying at least 5?
They said you wanna do 1 or not?
Well, it depends on what the engineer asks for, but generally, it's a 1-foot conduit.
5 or less.
Okay.
How's that? And then sometimes it brings up the question of where drainage from one lot to another goes, and someone puts a nice lawn in, raises it up, the guy next to them are hollow, is it all gonna go lengthwise, you know, drain to the road or drain away from it?
In other words, each lot won't need a cover for their driveway then?
Uh, most of them will not, I don't believe, but that's up to the engineer.
Okay, leave it up to him.
They're gonna have, they're gonna have to, some way to drain it off the street. We're gonna demand that from the town.
Like I say, I, I guess, my guess is that the, the culvert for the main, the whole subdivision will probably go right where that 66-foot mark is. That's a huge drainage swale that I have the drainage ditch in.
Yep.
Not at this time. Charlie, did you get a copy of the preliminary plan checklist?
No, I didn't.
Why don't I give you that? So we're all on the same page. That's, that's nothing more than a checklist, it's, goes with the, uh, this, this, the subdivision ordinance, so. Okay, if not-
I could, yeah, I got one more question, I'll look through the application, if things- On your application, the applicant proposed to dedicate the public on speech recreation almond lands. In the speech, you said no. Recreation areas, you said no.
I see that, go on.
Almond lands, you said no.
Where was the, the roadway, I said no?
No, that's on the-
Page three.
Page three.
Page three.
Right above them.
Good page, identify method of loss, if I saw anything. Good page, Ed.
Well, when I first, when we first did this, the, the plan changed as it progressed.
I can't believe that.
That's why this is a sketch plan.
Yes. And I guess that's the other thing, too, is we'll need, uh, association.
If it, if it's a public road, do you, do you still require an association?
No.
And the public road portion would have to be accepted by town meeting.
Right.
But we're not just talking about roads, we're talking about anything else in there.
Well, the common area.
That, that is the most likely, you know, obvious one. But then if you have other things come up with, you know, if you wanna see issues among the, the whole, well, staying within the footprint of the lot, for example, you know, who decides that once the developer's gone? If it comes down to a, a minimum or maximum square footage of a home, that's a developer sets. And then he's gone, who enforces it? Homeowner association as subdivision can serve a lot of things, I think. Good idea. Rather than throwing the problem back on the town, there'd be a little wobble.
That's why we have rain.
Yeah. Someone's culvert isn't draining, they block something out, or something like this, well, on that, we'll come back to town, because it's town road, but a lot of things come in there. The homeowners association.
And I guess that has to be registered with the state, then? What, the, the homeowners association? I know some, Sinclair's was, uh, registered with the Registry of Deeds.
Registry of Deeds.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If not, I'll take a motion to, uh, close the sketch plan.
So moved.
All those in favor? Five, zero, zero. Thank you much.
Give them something to do around.
Randy?
See you on the 14th.
At 2:00?
Yep.
Randy, do you have anything you wanna-
You gonna have a rain date on that, anything, George?
Spring, we have raincoat.
Wear a raincoat.
Raincoats and umbrellas.
If you put out public notice, if you have a rain date, save the thing.
3:00 instead of 2:00.
You wanna put the following date as a rain date?
Yeah.
Following Monday.
Oh, the following Monday is the next day?
Next day.
Oh, well, it's all-
It's up to you.
Up to you, you know, it's you, that's where you get the thing, Mark.
Yeah, right.
So the next day, same time as the rain date?
Or should we skip a day?
Do it the next day, let's get it over with.
Next day.
Yeah.
That's where you get the supersized aspirin bottle. That's where you get the supersized aspirin bottle.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry, Randy?
Yeah, I was just gonna, excuse me, I was just gonna say things are, of course, starting to pick up a little bit. The only thing that I have got, somebody approached today, came into the office today, and there's a possibility next month of having a site, yeah, site plan concerning, uh, three-unit building. It's already existing building, but they wanna turn it into a three-unit, uh, building. It's in the stages of it right now, they're looking to purchase some land, but I told them that they could put their stuff together and bring it before the planning board, and it could be contingent upon purchase of land, or, or buildings, whatever. So, at this point, that's the only thing we've got coming in today, otherwise, well, we've already worked on so far.
You ready to book a weather, you sound up yet?
Hmm?
Last month, you sound a couple of others, you hearing him back?
Yes, one of them, I, I, as a matter of fact, one of them just came in today. One of them just came in today and pulled a, took the paperwork to, uh, follow through with that. And luckily, that's a Sleitman's with the junkyard, that's a Sleitman thing, but, and the other one, um, I did talk with the owner, I found out through my sources that there has been some cleanup made and stuff, and now we gotta go check and see what, uh, the situation is with that whole program down there.
Anything on the house that's been involved?
Nope, nothing. I had a reporter in last week, but...
Saw that in the paper, or on-
Oh, it was written in the paper already?
No, it was on villagesoup.com there.
Yep. Otherwise, nah, George, that's about what I mean. Like I said, things are starting to pick up because the weather's changing, so.
Okay, thanks, Randy. Just take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Did we do open to the public?
Well, beans, there's no public-
Hope there's no one here, so.
You're not public?
No, I'm a reporter.
With whom?
There we go.
And your name?
Hi, welcome.
If it wasn't a familiar face, would you wear a name tag or anything?
I move we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
How we knew my situation?
All those in favor? Five, zero, zero. Thank you.